My internet's not working.
The last meeting I saw.
Yep, this.
Oh, it is?
It's on.
Okay.
Oh, oh, there.
Yeah, I think I like this one better.
Yeah.
Oh, what does that sound?
Did you find it for me?
No, I found my house.
Go.
Stay.
Yes. Go ahead. We'll start, okay. Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of our city's planning commission, Thursday, April fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, with our special start time of seven PM. So thank you all for coming early. Brisbane City Hall, Fifty Park Place. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Anderson.
Present.
Commissioner Munir.
Here.
Commissioner Parker.
Here.
Commissioner Reinhardt.
Here.
Records show Commissioner Doe is absent.
Consent calendar. So the items listed here, which are, oh, we don't have any draft minutes today. Let's see. This is, so consent, do I have any?
Adoption of agenda, you want to adopt the agenda?
Or should we wait until September?
Oh, yeah, right, right. Well, no, no, we can, we can go ahead and adopt tonight's agenda. Yeah, so can we have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda, please?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda for Thursday, April fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, for the Brisbane Planning Commission.
I second.
Great. All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, consent calendar, there are no items tonight, so we can skip that. Oral communications, I have three items here. Oh, wait, that's written, sorry. Oh, okay, is there anyone who wishes to speak on items not on tonight's agenda? No? Okay, so we'll need to open or close that. Written communications, we have three items here. We've got the Bay Area Monitor. We have a donor recognition party item from the Housing Endowment Regional Trust, San Mateo County. And we also have the, an annual policy luncheon from the Housing Leadership Council, San Mateo County. Great, okay, I think that's it. Do we have any other written items? No. Okay. So first, new business. And I'd like to say before we start, for Jerry, thanks for coming down and for your patience waiting, Robin and Brendan, all. Okay, so item one, we have one twenty-four San Bruno Avenue Design Permit, DP dash one dash sixteen, and Use Permit, UP dash one dash sixteen. And staff report, please.
Good evening. The applicant is proposing to demolish an existing single-family home and construct a new...
As I understand, Commissioner Anderson may need to recuse himself from this matter. Is it a conflict of interest?
Yes, indeed. Should I be down there now? All right, I will relocate.
Sorry about that. The applicant is proposing to demolish an existing single-family home and construct a new two-story, three-unit condominium building on this lot in the R-three residential district. Approval of this project requires a design permit for the new multifamily building, as well as a use permit for the proposed condominium use and associated condo plan and CCNRs. So here's some site photos of the existing conditions. As you can see, it's a relatively small, single-family home, and it's sandwiched between two multifamily structures to the north and south. And to the rear, it abuts the R-two residential district, and there are two properties that are developed with single-family homes, abutting the rear lot line. As this table shows and summarizes, the applicant's proposal meets the development standards of the R-three residential districts, so in regards to floor area, lot coverage, building height setbacks, as well as required landscaping and parking. It also complies with the condominium development regulations, which are contained in a separate chapter of the municipal code. These pertain to minimum amounts of outdoor space per unit, unit storage, as well as washer and dryer hookup availability. So in reviewing the applicant's site plan, you can see the proposed setbacks, which are at the sides of five feet. In the front, the first level, which is the garage, would maintain about seventeen-foot setback from the front lot line. The second story would overhang the lower level by about two feet, so it would still comply with a fifteen-foot setback in the front lot line. And the front entryway would be recessed further behind the garage facade. You can also see on the site plan the thirty-two-foot curb cut, which is proposed, and they provided a comparison in size to the eighteen-foot, which is the maximum permitted in the code. This is to accommodate the driveway and provide safe ingress and egress for the five-car garage, which we will look at in the next slides on the floor plans. This also shows the rear yard outdoor spaces, the attached deck at the second level for unit two, I'm sorry, three, and the lower-level on-grade patios, which are also shared by individual units and assigned as such in the CCNRs. So at the first level, a large part of the first floor is dedicated to that five-car garage. There are five parking spaces, which are the total required. Two, for the two larger units, would be provided in tandem, and one space would be dedicated to the smaller, lower level, lower-level unit. And again, these spaces would be dedicated in the CCNRs to the respective units. The garage would also accommodate required storage areas, as well as mechanical and HVAC. The unit on this level is the smallest unit. It's one-bedroom, and you can see there the attached patio area directly off the living space. At the second floor, there will be two units, these are the larger units, both are two-bedroom. There's an attached deck assigned to the rear unit, and you can also see a spiral staircase, which leads down to additional outdoor living space on the ground at grade. This floor plan also illustrates, I think, better how the windows and the front facade are recessed and the pointed kind of wall plane shape, which you can see towards the front of unit two. And continuing on to the third floor, which consists of just an enclosure access structure for the roof deck, which is dedicated to the front upper unit. And this building section illustrates the varying ceiling heights that are proposed, which gradually get taller and more grand, moving towards the rear of the building and the rear units. And the exterior materials, we consist of stucco with accent hardy plank material at the front of the garage, and there's actually physical examples of the hardy plank that you all are welcome to review. They're actually up at the display table. So the hardy plank accent would wrap partially around the sides of the building, as well as the garage facade. You can see here the, again, the, use the pointer. So this doesn't show up as well as in the floor plan, but these windows here would be recessed back from the exterior wall plane, as well as the front entryway, which is set back about six feet from the facade of the garage. And you can see the proposed treatment here for the third-level deck, applicant's proposed glass railings here. And just moving around the different elevations of the structure, you can see the rooftop enclosure for the deck, again, would be the highest point of this building. The two-story form would continue, though, rising a little bit higher due to the ceiling height in the rear. And this showcases the upper-level decks. And another angle that kind of shows better, the varied wall plane in the rear, following the unique shape of the rear portion of the lot. Color palette would be complementarily neutral, earth tones, accented by pops of color at the front entryway door, fascia around windows and doors throughout the building. The applicant has produced a 3D rendering, so this really demonstrates how the physical form of the building would fit within the context of surrounding development. You can see it probably benefits from those setbacks of the multifamily structures to the south and north, giving it a lot of sense of light and space and air. And the applicant has prepared a preliminary landscaping plan, proposing thirty percent of the lot area as landscaping, which is in excess of the minimum of ten percent required. It's generally providing low water use, native grasses, shrubs, and trees. We are recommending a condition that the final species, planting numbers, and locations, et cetera, be subject to Planning Director Review and Approval prior to building permit issuance. Something of note as well, the applicant is proposing removal of four trees, one decorative magnolia in the front yard, the others pine trees. The pine trees are collectively considered protected under Title twelve of the municipal code, so we are also recommending replacement of those trees at a one-to-one ratio with the end-water conserving species that would reach a kind of similar canopy height and at maturity as the existing pines. There are numerous findings required to approve a design permit. They are addressed in detail in Attachment B to the Agenda Report, and summarized as well in the Agenda Report here. So in terms of neighborhood compatibility, the San Bruno Avenue corridor has a mix of multifamily duplex and single-family homes, and this is consistent with the R-three zoning. Immediately adjacent to the property, as you saw, are two multifamily structures, so north and south, and two single-family properties to the rear. The two multifamily structures are of much greater residential density than the proposal. They're of similar height or taller. And the single-family homes to the rear would be buffered from the project by the rear yard landscaping, as well as the generous rear setbacks. In terms of building design, again, this neighborhood features, as most of Brisbane does, a variety of architectural styles, ranging from contemporary-modern to more traditional, such as right next door at one hundred San Bruno. The applicant's proposal, unique and attractive design incorporating contemporary-modern design elements, such as flat roof, asymmetrical facade, geometric wall planes, and a mix of exterior materials. The design is complementary to surrounding development, while also presenting a unique take and contributing to Brisbane's unique architectural vernacular heritage. Staff is recommending as a condition of approval that the glass railing at the upper-level deck be treated, just to minimize any glare. You could alternatively consider whether other materials may be more appropriate, such as wood or something else. In regards to site access and circulation, again, all five required spaces would be provided in the attached garage. The city engineer has reviewed the project and is willing to waive the eighteen-foot curb cut maximum if the commission feels they can approve the overall design of the project. The curb cut would eliminate one street space that's currently provided on that street. However, guest parking could be available in the driveway itself, which is quite wide, obviously. It would be partially within the public right-of-way. But that side of San Bruno has abundant street parking. There's no driveway access for one hundred San Bruno on that block. So overall, the city engineer was comfortable with that limit, should you feel you can approve the design. And then in regards to landscaping, as I stated, it's far exceeding the minimum area of landscaping required. We are recommending, again, Plan Director Review and Approval, the final landscape plan, as well as replacement of the three pine trees at the one-to-one ratio, subject to Director Approval. And then moving on to the use permit, this would be consistent with the general plan designation, which allows residential development between fifteen to thirty, thirty dwelling units per acre. Again, this project density would be at about twenty-three dwelling units per acre. Project is consistent with general plan policies addressing new residential development. Those are listed and discussed in detail in the Agenda Report. Again, as previously stated in the design permit findings, the project is compatible in terms of density, scale, and has minimal impact on adjacent uses and structures. And the project would enhance the neighborhood, providing additional housing on this infill parcel that's in very close proximity to transit, as well as our downtown and shops and restaurants. So in conclusion, staff is recommending conditional approval by adoption of the resolution, and subject to the findings and conditions of approval contained in the Exhibit A. I'll answer any questions at this time.
Great, thank you very much. So, any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
All right.
The sustainability criteria was used in this design review or not?
Is, in terms of green building?
Green building, yeah, and also provision for solar or any of the other stuff that, you know, the LEED standard.
Sure. So, the city's green building ordinance does not apply to residential development at this density. It applies to development of a greater number of units. So that doesn't take effect here in terms of the planning process. At the building permit stage, it will be subject to compliance with CalGreen, like any other project would be. And I, the staff report touches, touches upon the passive solar design. So this is a long, long building running east-west, so it has a long southern face, southern-facing wall. And in the, that wall, the applicant has proposed clear-story windows, so higher-up windows, which is a recommended solar passive design strategy, taking advantage of that southern sun exposure, without capturing too much heat. So in terms of design, that is something that was considered at this initial spot. At building permit stage, again, it would be subject to compliance with CalGreen.
And was any consideration given to the solar?
Solar energy?
Yeah.
Like solar panels?
Some solar panels or water heaters.
Yeah, I would refer to the applicant, yeah.
I can ask them, okay. The other question I have is regarding the tandem parking and the condominium situation, how that can be, is, are there any, you know, you said it will be subject to the city's approval, I guess, how is it going to be enforced? Because the thing is, each condominium is owned separately by a different owner, and in how they're going to manage to switch the cars, you know? That, in, in a single-family dwelling, it's okay because people are living in the same house, but this is a different situation here, so...
So the applicant has addressed that in the CCNRs. So the tandem spaces would be assigned to one unit, so if, one unit would be responsible, basically, for one set of tandem spaces. So that would be deeded to them. If, if another tenant used a spot that was deed-restricted to another unit, then obviously that could be resolved by the tenants themselves, but those two tandem spaces would be legally indebted to the two different units that would be using them.
And there are total, how many, five units, right?
Three units.
Three units, okay. So that's two and two and one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that, that makes me, yeah, that's okay.
Okay.
That's, that's all right. The other thing you mentioned about the remote control of the garage, so can you explain that a little bit more, what was the logic behind that and?
I mean, I think that's fairly standard of the project that you guys looked at. At twenty-three San Bruno had this condition as well, so just any time you're looking at cars off, going from a primary street, we are interested in not having cars queuing up to enter into the parking area. So a remote control access would just make it a lot easier for cars to approach and enter, yeah.
Just wanted to elaborate on that, so we can understand. Okay, I don't have any other questions.
Questions? Okay. I had no questions for staff. Thank you. So can we open up the public comment?
We'll open up a public...
So can we make a motion, open it up to the public comment?
I make a motion to open a public hearings on one twenty-four San Bruno Avenue.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, would anyone, Jerry, would you like to come down?
I'd also like to say that the guest parking is also deeded.
Just state your name for the record.
My name is Jerry Cool.
Thank you.
Just to answer your question a little more completely, even the guest spots out front are deeded to a particular unit, so that each unit has its space, and that would take care of any conflicts between people parking.
You were speaking about the, in front of the garages?
In front of the garage.
Yeah.
On that particular one, I don't know if you've seen this part of it. I have done this with Public Works before, the curb cut issue. What we did was we looked at the frontage of the property and how the curb cut, the eighteen-foot curb cut, would affect the overall front parking. We need twenty feet for each parking space. From the thirty-two-foot curb cut to the crosswalk would give us forty feet, which is two parking spaces. If we cut that back to eighteen, all we pick up is an additional seven feet, so there's no way that that really gets us any more parking. But what this does, it allows us to get guest parking off of San Bruno Avenue.
Yeah.
Which is a very similar situation to what we did up on eight-seven-five Humboldt. That's how we made the curb cut larger there, too. That one was, although this is the purview of the Public Works.
Yeah.
I think he's, at this point, he's kind of, he would like you guys to be okay with it, too.
Right. Yeah, it is. I saw earlier, it makes sense to me.
Yeah.
I mean, it'll, it'll encourage people to park in the driveway, instead of maybe partially off or in front of the driveway, so.
Yeah.
I do have a question, can you hear me?
Yes.
I do have a question about trash enclosure. You said there's no trash enclosure.
Yes, there's one on the side.
It says...
Well, it's not an enclosure, it's a screen. Basically, it's screening the view from the street, so that, the receptacles aren't enclosed, there's nothing built, but there's a visual screen to block the view from the street. That's what, that's what's there.
And each unit is going to have their own?
Each unit would have their own, correct.
So there's, so there's designated very...
And basically, it'd be nine cans down the side, right?
Right.
Okay, you're going, you're going to address about the solar stuff you...
We have not at this point looked at solar. Did you want to have any comment on it?
Come on down.
Hi, Robin Eubenski, applicant. I haven't really looked, thought about it too much. It's a flat roof, I think, I haven't really even done a, a study to see what would be workable there. I think I would look into doing some other energy efficiency things, water heaters and things of that nature. I'm not sure I would do it at this point, looking at a solar roof, per se.
How about a green roof?
Probably not at this point. You know, maybe the upper floor would do more, I mean, the hope is that it, it looks nice from the, you know, from the front of the building, but I don't know that it'd be a green roof.
There is, oh, I'm so sorry.
No, go ahead.
So, but there is space in case the homeowners' association decides they want to put in solar on the roof?
Yeah, I think there is some space, but I'm not sure what the efficiency would be up there.
Right.
It's kind of, just from exposure standpoint, it's not, you know, it's got the two buildings and this stuff, and it's, it's not oriented right for solar typically.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, one additional point I'd like to make is that, on my house in particular, they keep trying to sell me these solar panels. They call me up probably four times a week, but I have gotten my PG&E bill down, just with insulation and using LEDs, down to about thirty bucks a month in, in the summertime, and it never goes over seventy. And that's just using good, good materials, LED lighting, and just efficient appliances. So there's lots of ways to address that.
Yeah, when, when it comes for the design, and the design review at that time, I guess, not the design review, the building.
Now, now, if somebody was thinking about electric cars or something along that line, the people that were moving in or buying the units, they, they could easily put something up there, I would think.
Well, this, this building also is smaller or lower than the two residential units, and, you know, I actually live in San Francisco, and I'm fortunate enough that I get to look at my neighbors who are smaller, their solar panel, and it's not a great site, so I mean, you got to remember that the other two units, especially the one on this side, if we put solar up there, there was two floors that would be looking down on it, which isn't that great to look at.
Yeah, but the thing is, you have to weigh the, the benefit versus what...
I think the goal is to try to get more efficiency within the building and the, and other uses than to put panels protect, you know, I mean, there's always the option if somebody wanted to do it, but I don't think it's, at this point, a formal plan.
The electric plug-in, you're not going to provide any outlet for that, for electrical...
Well, that'll, that'll be up to the, whoever purchases the units at that point.
Yeah, but are you going to have a panel only installed to take care of that kind of a energy load?
Not, not at this point.
Otherwise, you have to do through the whole series of work to get, get the power you need.
Well, that'll be up to the person that's purchasing the unit. I mean, that's an additional cost to a project, for, for something that you may or may not use, so.
But maybe...
Yeah, they have slow charges.
They have two-twenty.
They have the slow charge.
They have slow charges, I guess.
Yeah, at, at least.
Okay. Thanks, Jerry.
Okay, anything else?
Oh, just one question on the parking. I was just curious, in your experience, I mean, how, you know, the, are, are the owners going to be encouraged, or do you think they're going to actually park in the garage or end up having one of their cars in one of the guest parking spaces?
Your guess is as good as mine. We, that's, that's part of the reason why it's necessary to prevent, provide additional storage in the building, you know? It's required to provide storage units, not just have a garage.
You have one unit for each?
One unit, yeah, and it's a specific square footage and...
How big are the storage units? I was wondering.
Off the top of my head.
They're one-twenty-six cubic.
Hundred-and-twenty-six cubic feet. There you go. Actually, they're a little, that's what they need to be, I think they're a little over that, but that's the minimum they're allowed to be.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Nope.
Oh, great. Oh, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, oh, closing.
No, you have to ask if anyone else wants.
Anybody else out there would like to comment? No? One more time.
I did take the time to go around to the neighbors and explain, you know, everything we were doing. If you were here last meeting, you'd notice that there were people here to talk about it, but I think it's obvious I've answered all their questions, since nobody bothered to show up.
So now that you got up, we'll have a whole series of more questions for you. Let's just spend another half an hour on it. Okay, I make a motion to close the public hearings.
Great.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, I think I, I don't see any problem with this particular project, I like it, and I make a motion to approve one twenty-four San Bruno Avenue Design Permit, DP dash one dash sixteen, and Use Permit, UP dash one dash sixteen, to allow construction of a twenty-feet-tall, whatever the rest of it.
Commissioner Parker, did you have any comments, or?
I have, look, I do have a comment. I think the design is really gorgeous. I think it'll be an addition to the town of Brisbane. I mean, it's very attractive, so I approve the project.
So you second it?
So, you second? Is that your motion to second?
Yeah.
All right. I, I agree, I think all the issues I usually look at when something like this comes up were addressed. I, I agree. I think all the issues I, um, usually look at when something like this comes up were addressed thoroughly. So, I mean, the parking, the, you know, the back lot privacy, I think, was one of, one of the issues. And, um, thank you for adding a little extra space between that and the building. You didn't have to, so. And, and the same goes for the landscaping, so. And it's, it's always a little encouraging when someone doesn't maximize the footprint of their lot, so I, I think people will enjoy that. Um, so, yeah. I think we, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 As usual, job well done, Cool, Jerry.
Are you gonna be one of the tenants once it's built?
Oh, great.
Oh.
Great.
Great.
She's a San Francisco person. Likes, likes the hustle and bustle.
Thank you. All right, so we can.
It's already seven-thirty.
It's seven-thirty?
Good, we're almost on time.
We are on.
Uh, yes.
So we can move on to old business?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Commissioner Anderson is coming back to join us. Record?
Hello.
So, old business tonight for the Baylands Planning Application, Baylands Concept Plans, the Baylands Specific Plan, General Plan Amendment Case GP dash zero-one dash zero-six. And related final EIR report, uh, Universal Paragon Corporation. Uh, we have the fiscal and economic considerations, and our independent consultant, Kaiser Marston Associates, uh, will be presenting their analyses and recommendations.
Uh, yes, as a precursor, um, honorable.
Oh, and there's Lloyd.
Hi, Lloyd. Um, just by way of background, you know, the, the issue of the economic and sort of fiscal impacts of this project have been of great concern both to the commission and the community, as well as the city council. Uh, and to address that, the city has a long working relationship with Kaiser Marston, uh, and they've been, uh, hired to basically perform an independent review of these issues related to fiscal, um, impacts. And also, uh, one of the other charges, uh, KMA was tasked with was looking at some very broad kind of economic feasibility issues. You know, it comes down to what makes a project feasible in a very macro level from the market standpoint. Again, that's just information to, to provide a little background context, uh, to the commission and for other decision-makers and the public as this process, you know, moves forward. So with that, um, whenever I introduce Debbie Kern and Tim Kelly of KMA, who will, will be making the presentation tonight. I'm not sure who's gonna lead off, but is Tim doing the whole thing, or? Okay, if you're ready to.
Come on in. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, and we, I really feel I need help with this. I appreciate your.
We're excited you're here.
Yes, we are.
Well, good evening. Uh, I'm Debbie Kern with Kaiser Marston Associates, and we are a land use economics advisory firm. And we have advised the city over a number of years in the former redevelopment agency. And I'm here tonight to talk about the fiscal and impact analysis that we prepared, uh, of the project. And to talk about what we did, why we did it, our key assumptions, uh, the preliminary findings, the limitations of the analysis, and then, uh, the next steps. First, why were we asked to do this study? Uh, the city has a policy that all new development must generate sufficient revenues, tax revenues, to cover the costs of providing municipal services to the project. In other words, it must pay for itself. It must be self-sustaining. And so the city wanted us to evaluate these preliminary EIR concepts to see whether or not, on an order of magnitude basis, it appears that these concepts might be fiscally neutral or might not be. And then the, the second purpose was to identify techniques and measures that the city might explore for enhancing the fiscal benefits or the fiscal impacts of the project. Ones that other cities are commonly using, uh, on large-scale development, so that was the second purpose. So, wh- what, what we did in our analysis, we looked at the recurring impacts on the city's general fund, the gas tax fund, and the Measure A funds. And why were those funds chosen is because those are the funds that fund all of the city's municipal services. And we looked at the recurring impacts upon build-out. So, uh, these are the impacts from the operations, uh, after the project's built. The analysis was undertaken as if you, as if the projects, the projects were built today and fully occupied today and operating today. So we looked at the amount of revenues that the project would generate if it was fully operational today. And we looked at, we evaluated the four EIR alternatives. And, uh, what, from our perspective, what's important is that these EIR alternatives are conceptual in nature, and that there's not specific phasing plans for all of the alternatives. There's a lack of specificity about exactly the types, the nature of the tenants, you know, who would occupy the office buildings. Exactly what be, would be the, um, the mix of residential uses, uh, the arena that's in the one variant, you know, who would occupy that arena? And so there's lots, it's a conceptual plant. And because these are conceptual plans, the fiscal analysis is preliminary in nature, and the findings are conceptual. And we look at it that you should view the findings as being indicators, and it's, the, the findings can be used as the first step in understanding the impacts of the project. And to identify potential issues, and then to also identify these other measures that you might want to incorporate in a development agreement as the project is refined and, and you go forward and it takes more shape. So typically, these fiscal analyses are done, um, they are refined over time as the project is refined. And so it is a dynamic process, and it's not, a- at this point, these, this analysis should not be viewed as, you know, this is the, the impacts of this project, and that's where we're at, because that's not the situation. In terms of, th- this is just a summary of the land use components of each one of these, uh, EIR alternatives. Uh, the scenario one is the developer-sponsored plan, and it has forty-four hundred residential units. It has approximately six-point-nine million square feet of non-residential, uh, with the focus being on commercial, I mean, office and R&amp;D uses, and about, uh, five-hundred-and-seventy thousand square feet of retail, and then a three-hundred-and-sixty-nine, uh, rooms, hotel rooms. The, there's a variant of that, uh, and that, in that one, there, about a million square feet of the office is removed, and then it's replaced with a, a million square feet of entertainment. And that is this arena that would be about an eighteen-thousand-seat arena, a five-thousand-seat, uh, concert venue. And, uh, and then in addition, that concept also has three-hundred-and-fifty more hotel rooms. So that's the developer-sponsored plan, uh, entertainment variant, variant, scenario one A. Now, scenario twos and two A are the community-proposed plans. And the, the base, uh, plan is a smaller project, has no residential units, has about five-point-two million square feet of, of office space, uh, no retail. And then it has a large, uh, civic and cultural use that would be, uh, tax-exempt. It would be really, it would be public-purpose uses. And then it has a, a very large hotel component of about two-thousand hotel rooms. And then two A is, uh, similar to two, except there's fewer hotel rooms, down to fifteen-hundred. And then it provides for about an additional twenty acres to recology, to expand their, um, their operations by seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand square feet, to enhance their, um, recycling operations. So those are the four scenarios that we evaluated.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Regarding the developers', uh, scenario, it's not a conceptual plan. They actually have the specific plan now. Am I correct?
That's correct.
So would that, would that make any difference in terms of your analysis?
Well, it, they do have a specific plan. We were, we were asked to treat each one of these, um, scenarios equally. So what, and what that means is that we assumed that each one was supported by the marketplace, and it was financially feasible, and that it would reach full build-out. And so that was the, that was the assumption, so. Um, and the other, you know, the other scenarios do not have that level of specificity. And even the developers' plan, they have a specific plan, but there's still some unknowns, like the mix of, of residential units between apartments and for-sale units. Uh, that, that mix is not known. And so to do a really refined fiscal analysis, you would know what that unit mix is. And, um, you would have more information about, uh, what types of, of R&amp;D tenants, or if there is, if there are, uh, proposed tenants out there or potential buyers. And so at the endpoint of a project, when you have all that specificity, you would, you would update the fiscal analysis to reflect those. And then it would provide you a much, much, much more accurate projection.
So at this stage, you can consider that as a semi-specific plan, not?
Well, it's a specific plan, but it's not, it's not, it doesn't have, um, all the specificity yet that you would like at the endpoint of a fiscal analysis. But yes, there's a specific plan for the developer-sponsored plan.
So we'll recommend another analysis be done once we have a little bit better.
Yeah, I think, uh, what I'm suggesting is that, and it's typical, that you would update this fiscal analysis as you go through and refine the project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let me see. In terms of our, our method of evaluation, our approach, um, as I mentioned, we, we looked at the impacts upon build-out. It's really a snapshot analysis. It's, it's a, it's not a, uh, we did not look at a cash flow because we don't have phasing for all of these concepts. We only have it for the developer-sponsored plan. And we used a combination of, of, we, we term these, these marginal approach and average cost approach to the analysis. And the, uh, marginalism, when we look at the specifics of the project, and we use market data, project-specific data, uh, and EIR data to evaluate some of the impacts where we have that specificity. For example, uh, we have from the EIR that the project will require eleven police officers. And so we use that data, and then we use the city's current budget of about a hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars per police officer to estimate the costs of providing police services, uh, for the project. Uh, also, we estimated then what the property taxes would be generated by, excuse me, the, the specific, um, land use components of the project. And at the hotel taxes, we looked at what, you know, what, what, uh, room rates might be, and looked at, and given, uh, occupancy data, and looked at the, examine what the, uh, hotel tax revenues would be. Uh, for other items, however, where we didn't have project-specific information, we use these budget factors from, uh, the city's current budget. For example, on recreational service costs, we looked at what the city's current budget is for recreational programs, divide that by the population. You get this per current, this per capita factor, and then we applied that to the projected population of the, uh, developer plan to come up with the, uh, amount of, of recreational department expenses. So those are the two approaches that we use, uh, to evaluate these revenue and costs. Uh, i- in terms of what the analysis doesn't look, didn't capture, did not capture one-time construction period of revenue impacts. This is, these are impacts of, from the operations only upon build-out. And, uh, a project like this, of a, a large project like this, would generate actually a tremendous amount of construction use tax revenue from the, uh, purchase of materi, construction materials. It potentially can't. They have to be, uh, the site has to be designated as a point of sale in order to capture those revenues. And it's typically from firms that, uh, they would, you would be buying materials from firms that are located out of the state of California. So if they're out of the state of California and you designate the site as the point of sale, then Brisbane could capture a tremendous amount of use tax revenue, which will be important to offs, to enhance revenues as this project is built out. And we also did not evaluate, uh, the economic impacts of indirect and induced impacts. So as spending recycles throughout the economy, it will support additional jobs. These, we've only looked at the direct impacts, uh, from the onsite construction, not the indirect and induced. Uh, key assumptions of the analysis, uh, as I mentioned, we assume that each one of these concepts is financially feasible. It's supported by the marketplace, and it will achieve full build-out. And I think those, those are huge assumptions, because when you have concepts that, uh, range in hotels from, you know, from three-hundred-and-seventy hotel rooms to two-thousand hotel rooms, uh, that, i- i- it's, it's unclear how long it will take for the market to absorb, for example, two-thousand hotel rooms. It's a lot of hotel rooms. For example, Mission Bay has, in its plan, uh, between two-fifty and five-hundred hotel rooms earmarked for that, for that property. So it's, the two-thousand hotel rooms is a lot of hotel rooms. It'll clearly take this project, you know, over between ten and twenty years probably to fully develop, so it's a long-term project. We've also assumed that all new streets and parks will be publicly owned and maintained by the general fund. And, um, it is very likely that that will ultimately not be the case with this project. Large projects like this, typically a portion of the interior streets for both business parks as well as residential are, are privately owned. And they're privately owned, they're privately maintained, so it won't be a cost to the general fund. And that will enhance the fiscal benefits of the project. Uh, parks may also be, they may be publicly owned but not publicly maintained. For example, the Visitation Valley project that P, uh, PUC is, is developing in San Francisco, uh, BUPC is developing in San Francisco. Uh, they, they are responsible, the developer's responsible for maintaining the parks for twenty-two years. And so they're owned by the city, but it's privately maintained. So that will relieve the, the, the burden on the general fund. So that is something that will be refined, I think, over time as the project is, um, unfolds and moves forward. We've also assumed, uh, residential values of about a million dollars for the, for the townhome units, and, uh, six-hundred-and-forty-three thousand for the apartments and condominiums. Those are consistent, basically, with the pricing, uh, per square foot pricing in Brisbane. And that single-family homes in Brisbane are about, about nine-hundred thousand dollars for the same-sized unit. And assuming a ten percent bump in the pricing for a new unit, then this, these are supported. These are also supported by the prices that are being, um, generated in, over in Hunter's Point area. So, uh, this is where we think that, I mean, it has a big impact on the, on the project's economics in terms of fiscal revenue.
Can I interrupt for a second? Did you, um, take into account that twenty percent of the buildings are gonna have to be low and moderate housing?
No. At this, we have not looked at the affordable housing requirements.
Okay.
Another assumption that impacts the analysis is that upon full build-out, the existing rock-crushing operations will have to cease and will, cannot be relocated onsite. And those, those operations currently generate a hundred, eight-hundred thousand dollars of city revenue. And I know that's a big concern of the city as to losing that revenue, uh, and what, how will that be addressed? And so because this is a build-out analysis, we've assumed that it's gone. But in fact, as this project is built out and over the course of construction, it's possible that those operations could be relocated temporarily to other parts of the property that are not being, uh, needed for development, and it, they could be phased out over time. And the other, another key assumption is that we've assumed that all of the current tax allocation procedures and tax rates will remain in effect over the duration of the, of the project. And, um, the state changes, uh, tax rates, for example, property taxes, ERAF, and, uh, other things change. And so we haven't looked at what potential impacts future changes could have, so it assumes all of the existing, existing laws.
And you're also assuming that the Golden State Lumber will stay?
Yes, that's our assumption, that's our understanding.
Okay.
Uh, this, this slide just summarizes our preliminary findings at this point. And, uh, the general finding is, is that each of these projects, upon full build-out, uh, if they were built today, would likely generate a, a fiscal surplus to the city of, this scenario one being one-point-one million, uh, going up to scenario two of eight-point-seven million dollars per year. So these are. So these are surpluses per year. And as we'll discuss later, I mean, these are driven, these findings are driven by these assumptions, and by these land use components.
And can I ask a question?
Sure.
So that's factoring in all the services, such as the police, and, and whatever infrastructure that needs to be maintained, et cetera?
Yes. It includes, these are all, but it's just service costs. There's no capital costs in here. It's, they're only ongoing municipal service costs. So it, it, this analysis doesn't look at any capital costs. It's assumed that all the capital costs are being funded privately. And as we'll discuss later, I mean, it's, it's key to know that, that without the hotel component in these projects, that each scenario would expect to run a deficit, except for the recall AG variant. And, and that's because of the huge amounts of TOT, transient occupancy tax revenues that a hotel would generate, and very little service costs. So the, the findings are very sensitive to those hotel components. But the deficits could easily be addressed by shifting some of those public works costs to the private sector, which is a standard method for these large-scale projects. So that's why I, I don't want people to get set on these numbers, because they are, they're just order-of-magnitude indicators at this point in time. This slide, we look at the, what are the major revenue components of the different scenarios? And these are of the first, of the developer-sponsored plan. And as you can see here, property taxes is the, is the largest single component. The city receives about 18% of the base 1% tax levy. And the, the developer-sponsored plan is estimated to have an assessed value of approximately $5.4 billion. So we estimate that it will annually generate about $9.6 million of annual property tax revenue. And the entertainment variable, variant will actually generate more, of about $10 million of annual property tax revenue. Sales and use tax is the second-largest revenue source under the developer-sponsored plan of about $3 million a year, and that's from that retail component. And also from, it's assumed that, that the, the R and D and the office uses will generate use tax revenue, consistent with the levels that businesses across San Mateo County are generating. And it varies tremendously from business to business, as your finance director will tell you. Some businesses generate a lot, and some don't generate any, but we've assumed an average for San Mateo County in the analysis. TOT is another large source of revenue. It accounts for 11% under the developer-sponsored plan, and then up to 20% under the entertainment variant, because of the additional hotel rooms. For the community's proposed plans, the revenue projection, the composition is different, in that the TOT is by far the largest source, ranging from 46% of the revenues to over 55% of the revenues. And that, again, is because of those large hotel components. The second-largest source is property tax, at about 25% of the revenues. We've estimated that the community plan will have an assessed value ranging from about $2.4 billion to $2.6 billion. So it's, it's about, you know, half, or less than half of the amount of the developer plan, but that's because it's a much smaller project, you don't have all those residential units that generate a lot of assessed value. Then we turn to, what are the major components of service costs? And this slide addresses all of the, all of the scenarios. And as you can see here, that the single largest cost is for fire and emergency medical services. And this cost element was, these cost estimates were estimated based upon this average cost approach, which is using the city's budget, and then dividing it by the, the service population that the city's serving. And it is believed that, once more, or more attention is paid to this, as to what actually the needs will be for the project, that this cost will go down, that it, it seems to be high. And the next, the second-largest component is public works, which is at 20% of the total amount of costs. And, and again, that one, we believe, will go down, as a portion of those maintenance costs are shifted to the private sector. And for the community plan, the costs are pretty equally distributed between fire, public works, and police, all at about 25% of, of total costs. So it's a little bit different between these two plans. And again, we think that the fire costs can go down, and the public works costs can go down. Police costs are, have been estimated by the EIR, so those are probably good, fairly good numbers. Now, we were also asked to look at the impacts of the project on a land use component. And that's because, you know, we have these big mixes of land uses, and, but I want to caution you against, about making, drawing conclusions from these land use analysis of saying, then, we should just have only the land uses that generate positive fiscal benefits. Because when you look at these, first of all, if you look at them in isolation, it, it takes away from the notion that, for example, in order to have retail sales, you have to have people, because people generate, you know, you have to have customers. And so where would those customers come from? In order to have hotel rooms supported, you generally have to have businesses, in order for that, for that to work. I mean, there are other outside drivers of demand, but it's, you can't really look at each one of these in isolation, some of them specifically, because you need to have a mix of uses in order to generate those, those impacts. And it's also, these, these impacts by land use do not reflect those, those mechanisms that I was discussing, such as shifting some of the public maintenance costs to the private sector, the parks maintenance, the street maintenance, or some of the other items. And so the, the other mechanisms, so these are really raw indicators. But as you can see, hotels generate a much higher surplus than any other land use, and it's, it's approximately about $4,700 per room. And that's because of the, the city collects 12% room tax, and there's, the service requirements are very minimal. And retail generates a surplus, and so does office and R and D. Conversely, residential, on a raw basis, generates, is estimated on this project to generate a negative. It doesn't always generate a negative, it's a function of, of really the service costs and the price points of the homes. The price points here are high enough to, that it wouldn't generate a negative. But if you, for example, if you had, if you shifted the maintenance of the streets to private, to the private sector, and then you reduce some of those fire expenses, then the residential would probably pay for itself. So it, these negatives that are shown here would not exist. And so that's, but this just gives you an order-of-magnitude understanding of, of the impacts of these different land uses. Now, the, the cultural and civic and entertainment uses are estimated to generate a negative, and that's because those uses, under the community plan, are tax-exempt. And so there's really not much of a revenue base that they, that they would be generating. Now, I'd like to move to, where do you go from here, and what do, what do cities often look at, or mechanisms that are adopted, to enhance the fiscal benefits of projects? One thing to look at is, is, is to capture the construction use tax revenue that I mentioned. And it would be a tremendous amount of money. I asked, I did a quick calculation, and it, the DSP could generate over $10 million of construction use tax revenue to the city. And so that is something that, that the city should try to capture, and the way to capture that, we can go through that, is with a development agreement. The next mechanism to look at is, which we mentioned before, is privatizing, funding a portion of the municipal service costs. You can do that either through an assessment district, you could do it through a community facilities district for services, and you can shift a portion of the street maintenance costs, the cost for maintaining parks. You can also privatize a portion of the costs of, for police and fire services, too. And that has been done, for example, on former military base developments in Alameda. The private sector there is funding a portion of police, fire, and road maintenance costs. And as I mentioned, in Visitation Valley, UPC will be funding ongoing park maintenance costs. That's also being, this technique is being used at Treasure Island, and other military bases, and, and also in greenfields, where, where you have to, you know, put a new fire station in order to serve a project, and they're very high, very big expenses, then those expenses are borne by the private sector. Another that is more difficult to implement is this maximize the amount of use tax revenue, because that is so, varies so much from business to business. But you can try to attract, or set up, design your project so that you have more manufacturing businesses, and that will help to enhance the amount of use tax revenues. Another mechanism that could be considered is, is really, we call it metering of land uses. And what, what that is, is that you condition the issuance of building permits, based upon the achievement of land use thresholds. For example, you might not issue, you would tie the amount of residential building permits to the amount of, of office space, or retail space, or hotel rooms that have been built. So, and for example, in the Visitation Valley, they have requirements that this office building, this historic office building, has to be delivered by a certain point in time, relative to the number of residential units. So you're not permitted to go forward with the next phase, until you have these public benefits in place, so to speak. Another is just managing these existing, the relocation of these existing businesses to maintain the tax revenue of moving that rock-crushing around, until it can't be moved around anymore. Another is, is possibly adopting new taxes. For example, in San Francisco, there's an admission tax, which will generate a tremendous amount of revenue for that new Warriors Arena. And also in Hollywood Park, they have an admissions tax down there, that applies just to that, to that new facility for the, for the football team. So that can be a tremendous amount of new revenue, that doesn't affect, you know, existing, the existing tax base. And the other mechanism that you could look at is updating the fiscal impact analysis as you move forward with the project. And actually, prior to each phase, you could have a fiscal impact analysis done, that would look at what are the existing impacts, it would take in actual, it would be an assessment of what is actually going on now, and then what the, the next phase would possibly generate. And you would require that the fiscal impact analysis demonstrate that the project is generating a cumulative surplus, in order to get entitlements to go forward with the subsequent phase. So you condition each phase, upon demonstration that the prior phases have generated a positive or fiscally neutral impact to the city. So these are all these mechanisms that, that we think that you could consider, as you go forward in the planning process. And so this slide just sort of sums up, and, and how are those enhancements implemented? And it is really through a development agreement. That's where you can, development agreement, you could have a municipal services financing plan as part of that development agreement. And that, that municipal services financing plan would lay out exactly, these are all the things, all the services that are needed for this property, to be adequately served. And this is who's going to pay for it, and this is their shares of obligations. It can lay out the parameters for the community facilities districts. For example, what is the maximum burden that could be placed on, on homeowners? That's a standard part of that. What requirements will be placed on contractors, so that the city will actually receive the use tax revenue from the construction? So you have to, you have to manage that, and require these subcontractors to designate the site as the point-of-sale. And so it can have all these provisions that, that will ensure that the project will pay for itself, and it won't burden the existing residents of Brisbane, or the existing tax base. So that completes my presentation. If you have any questions about it now, or, and then I'll, if not, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Tim.
Do you want to get through the next presentation, and then we'll?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll come back and ask questions.
Okay. So Tim's going to discuss the financial feasibility issues of the project.
Thank you very much.
So, good evening. My name's Tim Kelly. I'm obviously with Kaiser Marsden, too.
Welcome.
Yeah. I don't have as many numbers as Debbie, so. So what we're, first of all, we're doing an economic feasibility considerations, because it's not, we'll explain why it's not technically an analysis. And we're just focusing on the developer-sponsored plan, the DSP plan. So as, this is a theme that, I guess, is running through a lot of the numbers presentations, is this is a high-level, order-of-magnitude numbers, because there's not a precise, specific project. The technical cost data that we'll talk about, as we go through this, which mostly has to do with site development costs, and what we refer to as infrastructure, were provided by UPC and its consultants. We have to rely on their information. We're not engineers, we're not civil engineers. So we're using their information. And I would just tell you that, from our experience on working on large projects like this, as Debbie says, this is conceptual. I mean, these numbers evolve over time, you know, with, as you get better information, as they start getting more fine-grained, they start figuring out ways to manage the costs better, refine the costs, implement them better. So this is like, this is sort of this point-in-time analysis, that we expect, as they move forward, the costs will get refined, and, and make more, maybe, they'll be refined, let me just leave it at that. So at a very, very high level, the feasibility analysis has to have revenues that exceed the development costs. And so, in this case, the simplest way to do it is just to say, land values have to be above the cost, the threshold cost, to deliver the site. I mean, and what I mean by deliver the site, it's not building the vertical, but, you know, you buy a piece of dirt, and you build, right? So it's, it's delivering a site upon which you can build. And so, just intuitively, in theory, you know, the land value number has to be greater than that, or, or if the, you know, and if they're not, if they are greater, land values are greater, then you're going to proceed. And if they're not greater, then you wait, or you rework the numbers. And, you know, the markets change. So, you know, if you went back to 2005, we certainly don't have the same land values today that we had then. I mean, things have changed dramatically. So it's not to say they won't continue to change. Let me just, so the factors, the market factors that influence the site is obviously the Bay Area economy. I think you've probably heard endless stories about this, about job growth and housing demand, and, you know, that growth is, for jobs as well, exceeding the ability to produce housing, and both are very strong. The location of the site, I mean, just in a Bay Area regional context, or even from the West Bay, I mean, it's a terrific location. It's between SFO and downtown San Francisco. It's got a long frontage, right along 101. It's, it's a very strong location. The size of the site, which we'll talk about more, is also an asset. I would venture to guess, aside from the soils conditions and everything else, I mean, it's probably the largest undeveloped, with potentially entitlements in, in the West Bay. I mean, it's, it's a significant, major site that will attract interest. Conversely, you know, it's also, it's Conversely, you know, it's also, it's in a competitive environment. You know, you have Hunter's Point doing a major new shopping center, you've got all the hotels coming along. So it's not to say that there isn't a market for it. Some land uses are going to take more time than others for it to develop. So let me just keep going through this. So in terms of site development costs, what we focused on was what we call infrastructure, which are, as I said earlier, necessary to open up the site for development. So what does infrastructure, in this case, mean? It means the closure of the site, the remediation of the site, the grading, the utilities, roads. I mean, you don't have to build it all at once, but you do have these major costs that you have to incur just to have a buildable site. I mean, you've got to close the facility, you have to do remediation. And the analysis, we'll show you some numbers shortly, but we didn't consider other costs. Examples of those is, we did not take into consideration their land costs, for example, or all the pre-development costs. So we just put those aside and just said, you know, the threshold needs to at least cover the infrastructure costs. And, you know, as the project gets built out, you know, it'll become more valuable and so it'll get higher up. So at a, at an entry-level, first phase, we at least need to cover the infrastructure costs. So what are the infrastructure costs? So UPC's consultants have estimated that for the entire site, it's like 1.1 building, 1.1 billion, which includes soft costs of financing, not, not financing, design contingencies. We asked them to break those costs down into different phases, and even their first phase was a $300 million infrastructure cost. I think what, trying to make a point is, these are big numbers. We understand from it's being presented that while some costs are variable and can change as it's phasing, there's still some big fixed costs that need to be funded upfront, and it's difficult to phase. So the first phase may only be 200 or 300 million dollars, but even if it were only 100 million dollars, that's, that's still a big number. And it's somewhat, you know, it's independent of the land uses, and you have to find land uses that can cross that threshold. In other words, it's hard to do a five-acre hotel when you have to fund 100 million dollars to open up the site. So that's why I keep saying, what's going to happen, in my view, is, you know, they have these big threshold costs, but, but they're going to start refining them so that they can manage the numbers. But it would appear that, given that it's over a billion dollars, it seems like it's hard to get a cost even down to 100 million dollars, which is still a big number. So, and then the revenue side of it, again, this is a developer-sponsored plan, this number could be different by different plan to plan, but of the 684 gross acres, over half of it is in open space, roads, solar farm, whatever. So the high-valued development acreage site that can produce income is about 300 acres, so it's a little less than half. So when you take the 300 acres and you divide the 1.1 billion dollars, you're getting a land value of, just a threshold land value of $84 a foot, which is between 3 and 4 million bucks an acre. I mean, just, just to open up the site. And that the initial phase arguably could be over 100 million dollars. So given those sorts of parameters, the primary land use engines, doesn't mean it has to be the only land use, but the primary land use, the economic engines are campus office or residential. So what do we mean by campus office? So campus office to us, you know, I was asked the question, how big could it be? It could be 30 acres, it could be 50 acres. If you think of Facebook, so I'm trying to make a comparison with Sierra Point and Facebook, let's say. I'm not talking about Sierra Point. I'm not talking about a new million square feet like you have at Sierra Point. I'm talking about a campus that's like Facebook, that would be, you know, three, four stories, maybe six, up to six, but it has streets through it. Those, if you can have, if you can have a site on the peninsula, between the airport and San Francisco, entitled, and you can deliver a site that has an EIR, that is going to be a very attractive site in the market, even if the development doesn't happen right away, because you're controlling the ability to produce a product for a long period of time with a development agreement or whatever, that would be very attractive in the marketplace. So even, even you could say, well, who would the tenant be? I mean, it's hard to say, you know, is it Genetek? I don't know. Is it Google, another Google? Who knows? I mean, but the reality is, if you went back 10 years, you wouldn't be talking about these tenants, and now we are. And this is, this is one of the few sites left that really could deliver that kind of, but we're talking about 300 acres. So we're not talking about a 300-acre campus office. We're probably talking about, you know, you could have also a large residential project that could go with it, too. I mean, you could, so, and I guess, my view, it's sort of a blend of a large campus office with large residential. To be honest, right now, in the marketplace, I mean, if you take some of these big tech tenants, or, they're looking for a total live-work environment, even if their employees might live someplace else. The fact that you would have residential next to a major campus would actually, I think, make the campus even more attractive to some of these end-users because of, then you have, you also have the Caltrain station. I mean, that's a big plus, I forgot to mention that. So there are a lot of variables here that you, that makes a site very interesting in the marketplace, with the condition that they have to spend a lot of money just to open it up. And so, the question my staff was asked, well, could it, could you, could you phase it and just do a hotel? No, no. I mean, you could do a campus office with a hotel, or a hotel with a campus office. Could you open it up with retail, big retail project? The answer is no. I mean, that land value's too high, you have whatever the square foot, 700,000, whatever it is, being over on the Candlestick site, that's being, the retail project would be hard to do. There are really very few land uses. There are institutional land uses, but that's not what we're talking about. I mean, who knows? I mean, institutional used to be like UCSF or something like that. There's some, you know, nonprofit or major corporation that's institutional, but we're talking about real estate-type projects that could open this up. So it's, that's the scenario we're looking at. So the conclusions are that you need major parcels to support the cost. In other words, I think, you know, probably, in my mind, I'm thinking the phasing is going to like be probably at least 30 acres per phase, maybe bigger, but that's still 10 phases in 300 acres. It could be 50 acres. Clearly, if you went out with the residential market, somebody would take 100 acres, I would guess, you know, tomorrow. But, as, you know, Debbie was making references to a balance between land uses and fiscal impacts, and, you know, what is the best generator for the city, not only in, on their budgets, but also, you know, how you vision, your vision for the city, and that it's, you know, might not want to be just primarily residential, or you might have it much less residential. So there's some combination. Then, the question came from staff, would reducing the land area, the development land area from 300 acres, you know, still have a viable? Well, as best we understand, these infrastructure costs, I mean, if you, you spread them over 300 acres, and then you spread them over 100 acres, you know, I don't think the costs go down proportionally. So it just, it just even becomes, the threshold value just becomes higher, and therefore the dynamic of when it would be built would be longer. I mean, so it just takes longer for the market to get there. Again, you know, if you go back 10 years, land values were a lot lower than they are today. God knows, 10 years from now, presumably, they're going to be higher again. But the, the, the smaller the site, the higher the infrastructure costs, the higher the threshold price, and the more, the longer it's going to push it out there until it happens. And then the last point, I just want to, I guess I'm repeating myself at this point, but I think these are really high-number, high-level numbers. They're going to be re-engineered, revalued, but I don't think the basic conclusion, I guess, the big-picture conclusion, is going to change in terms of the primary land uses. So that's sort of my presentation of a big, complicated project. So.
Right now. Great. Thank you, Tim.
So can we take a break? So, how would you like to go?
Thank, John, could we, could we take a break? A five-minute break?
Sure.
Please? Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break and gather our thoughts.